Okay, here we go. Study session of September fourteenth, twenty twenty one is called the order. Donna, you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Deputy Mayor Peterson. Councilmember Bode.
Here.
Councilmember Innesco.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Feas. Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right, thank you. So for our study session tonight, we have City Engineer Ken Gill with information for us regarding the local road safety plan.
Good evening, Council. It's good to see your smiling faces, and even if it is in Zoomville. But it's, I hope you're getting out and enjoying the last of this fall weather. So we're using it to our taking it to our advantage to take care of some paving projects. But that's not the topic tonight. The topic-
And it's still, it's still summer. We're gonna hold on to this for another eight days.
You know, I'd be lying to you, Councilmember, if I told you that was gonna happen. It's, it's scheduled to start pouring down rain on Friday. So that's why we're chip sealing tomorrow. So, but so I would love to say you are a hundred percent correct, but I, I'd be, I'd be lying to you if I told you it wasn't gonna start raining soon, so. So the topic tonight is something that I'm really kind of excited about. And I know we've been working on this for a long time because I presented it to you quite a few months ago, but it's our local road safety plan. And I want to introduce you to our consultant, Ryan Shea. Ryan grew up in Tenino. Graduated from Saint Martins University with a degree in math. And has been a transportation planner for Shea Cardio for the past fifteen years. So also Ryan has a unique Shelton connection, and then he spent the summer of two thousand four working at the Simpson Lumber Mill. So I will turn it over to Ryan and let him tell you what he's been up to the past three months. Take it away, Ryan.
Thanks. I'm happy to be here. I'm excited to kind of share the progress we've been making over the summer on this local road safety plan. So let me share my screen. I assume that everyone can see the slideshow. Okay. So we started this process. Ken reached out to us in the spring about providing a local road safety plan and just to get things started, as he mentioned, my name is Ryan Shea. I work with SCJ Alliance and I'm hoping that this presentation can kind of be interactive. I would hope that if at any point any of you have questions, feel free to just interrupt me and kind of voice them and we'll, we'll deal with them or if I have an answer later, then I'll kind of ask you to wait for me, but feel free to interact. At the moment, we're just trying to present the information that we have right now and, and honestly, we're, we're trying to get as much local input as far as on the ground concerns and experiences as we can before we get anything formally published. So any, any local knowledge that any of you have regarding safety, we're, we're eager to mine that knowledge. But for today, I'm gonna walk through kind of what a local road safety plan is, talk about the crash history for the city, and then kind of walk through the process of determining risk factors and priority corridors and then potential countermeasures. So with that, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the term local road safety plan, but yeah, the idea behind it is that it's, it's allowing a city or a, or a public agency, counties, states, they can happen at all levels to kind of take a data-driven analysis approach to safety and specifically focus on fatal and serious injury crashes. I know that's kind of been a bigger and bigger priority and Target Zero being a statewide program is really focused on trying to reduce and eliminate fatal and serious injury crash types. The, the data that we get for this process is provided by WashDOT and really it just kind of, whenever a crash occurs, police report to the scene, they file an incident report that gets collected by WashDOT. WashDOT maintains a statewide database of any and all reported crashes in the state, which they make available to, I mean, anybody and we, we've solicited the last five years of crash data to try to get a representative snapshot of what's happening in the city. And I would say too that while the, the data set's pretty robust, it, it only contains crashes that were reported. There are unlikely to be crashes that occurred that were not reported and even more specifically, everyone's got those near miss experiences that weren't actual crashes, but were very scary and could have potentially resulted in a significant crash. And that's the sort of gap in the data we get from WashDOT that is another, another element that we're hoping if there's any sorts of stories like that, that any of you have heard about or experienced personally, that knowing about those and where they occurred to make sure that we're not missing a spot in the city that might potentially be dangerous. And I would also just take this moment to kind of explain that, yeah, well, let me jump to the next slide, actually. So, yeah, we're gonna use this plan to help understand the safety issues in the city and kind of help determine priorities. The way that a local road safety plan works is it attempts to find system-wide or systemic problems and then if you can do that, you can understand locations that may or may not have had a serious or fatal crash, but are, that have the conditions that maybe make it dangerous without having that crash occur yet. So, you know, over the, the law, you know, the last few decades, safety investments have primarily been focused on spot improvements. So you, you've had a fatal or serious crash and so you know that's a problem spot. So you, you find money and you fix that spot. And over time, it was kind of found that while this investment was occurring, that the number of serious and fatal crashes wasn't really dropping. And one of the conclusions that was drawn from that is that the contributing circumstances, the characteristics of the road or the intersection at these locations where serious or fatal crashes occur matter, but maybe the individual locations are a little bit random. So instead of only focusing on spots where crashes have already occurred, this idea of trying to step back and figure out, well, given these four conditions, we know that those conditions were present at the fatal and serious crashes we've seen, where else in our system are those conditions present? And, and maybe looking at a systemic solution that addresses those spots that have and have not had serious or fatal crashes can be a more proactive approach. That's kind of the, the main focus of the local road safety plan process and WashDOT's been involved in this process with us and they, they oversee or, you know, record and gather all these plans and for them especially, they made sure to emphasize that the systemic element of these plans is really key in finding those, those themes where conditions are unsafe and then finding solutions that kind of be matched to spots before or after a fatal or serious accident has occurred. And as an example of what I kind of mean by system-wide or systemic solutions and, you know, it would, in a more rural setting, like a county setting where there's a lot of high-speed roads that may or may not have adequate street lighting, you know, you might find out that we've had four serious fatal crashes and they've occurred in instances where there's high speeds and not a lot of lighting. So rather than just put lighting in at those four spots, kind of taking a step back and saying, well, we need to get lighting on all these roads where these conditions are the same because any of these other locations could have been the next spot for a fatal or serious crash. But that doesn't mean we ignore the spots where they've already happened. Obviously, those are unsafe too and, and those can get a lot more specific to the condition. And as the example I list here is if you have an issue with speeding, I know a, a nice treatment that can be considered is having a raised intersection tabletop. If any of you have driven through Saint Martins University, there are several of those throughout the main campus there where the entire intersection is raised a few inches and it really does a good job of controlling speeds. And that's just an example. I mean, obviously, every specific spot has a, a set of circumstances that make a, a certain type of fix the most appropriate. And then the outcome of a local road safety plan, in addition to getting an idea of where your needs are as a, as a city, it also helps prioritize projects and be ready for funding. A lot of times when you want to go for funding, having this local road safety plan is a huge part of competing well for funding. So that's kind of an overview of what the local road safety plan is and kind of what it's aiming to achieve. If there aren't any immediate questions, we can kind of, I can jump into kind of the existing crash data that the city of Shelton has had. So on screen right now is a heat map of the eight hundred and thirty-two reported crashes over the last five years. And the, the red spots would indicate a more of a density of crashes where there was a lot more focused in a specific area. So you can see kind of throughout the city where the higher concentrations of crashes have occurred and railroad in first is, I think, the spot that jumps out the most. That, that being State Route three through town, I guess it's not too surprising that there's likely a lot more traffic there and, and, and I would expect that you would all recognize that all these main corridors where you see the consistent trail of red and blue, those are kind of the main corridors in town and as you have more volume, you're going to have more crashes. We, we didn't specifically dig into crash rates for this effort. We were focused more on the individual serious fatal crashes. And that's kind of what's driving the overall goals of this plan, but it's still good to know where the overall crash tendencies are. And so among those eight hundred and thirty-two crashes, there were sixteen that were either fatal or serious injury crashes, which was about two percent. And overall, that's not necessarily out of line with other communities, but still sixteen is a lot. And I, I will just say too that fatal Target Zero and all these policies that are focusing on reducing deaths, there were two fatals in the city of Shelton, but it's widely accepted or understood that serious injuries were just a, the short step away from fatal. And so while those aren't fadals in fatalities in and of themselves, they're considered in the same, you know, category because they were so close to being fatalities. And so the next graphic, before I get to a map that shows the serious and fatal crashes, when we, looking at the entirety of the crash data for the city, one of the first things we did was assign each crash to the, to the main roadway corridor. And then once we did that, we, we then went through and ranked the corridors by total crashes. So on the, the table, I mean, you can see right now is the, the, the top, what, it's twenty overall, it's two slides. This is roughly the top ten corridors in the city just based on total crashes. Again, this is not the, the crux of the plan, but it certainly contributes to where we decide the needs are, just the overall crash tendencies. And, you know, these are the same roadway sections that if we were to go back a slide, you would have seen in the blue and or the red. One thing that's not shown in this table, this table breaks down the type of crashes. But what it doesn't show is the length of the corridor. So as you would expect, the longer a corridor, the more, the more pavement, the more opportunity for crashes. So the longer corridors would often have the most crashes. Although despite that, the corridor on the top of the list, First Street between Mill Street and Railroad Ave is one of the shortest corridors on this list and it is number one anyway. So not only is it a high crash corridor, but it's also shorter than a lot of the ones below it, which means it's a very concentrated corridor of crashes, which bears out in that slide before where you can see that this entire corridor is fairly red versus other corridors that have a lot of blue. So just kind of dissecting and kind of presenting the overall, you know, crash history of the city. We spent a fair amount of time during the summer kind of reviewing this and trying to understand themes and trends. And the next slide shows the, the next, the bottom half of the top twenty. There's, there's nothing magical about deciding that twenty corridors need to be focused on. It was just kind of a, a fairly natural stopping point for us because that's where we got to two crashes a year or higher. There, there are twenty corridors in the city that are averaging two crashes a year or more, and that's kind of where we decided to break it off. And then getting into the, so this slide here, this graphic to the right shows the location of each of the serious or fatal crashes and the fatal, the, the two fatal collisions are shown in red. And then the, the fourteen that were serious injury crashes are shown in orange. And right away, one of the first takeaways we, we got from all of this was that of the sixteen fatal serious crashes that occurred, ten of them involved a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And, and that, that stood out immediately as a major trend. Both of the fatalities involved a bicycle or pedestrian and, and most of the serious injury crashes. And, and it's not hard to understand that those are especially vulnerable members of the, of the roadway. And so when they're involved in any crash, the odds of it becoming a serious or fatal are much higher than two vehicles. But even with that, this is, this was much higher than like you would maybe see in other jurisdictions. So it, without having finished the process, we immediately assumed that this would be a focus of the study. And so because of that, the, the next slide, we, we went ahead and kind of mapped out all of the serious fatal, all of the crashes that involved a bike or a pedestrian. There were many that weren't serious and fatal, but understanding the vulnerability of those users, we felt that any of those could have fairly easily escalated in the, in different circumstances. And you can kind of see that, like, for instance, at first in a railroad, there are, there's essentially seven in a pretty condensed look area there, and that was just a higher concentration of crashes overall, also a higher concentration of bike-ped crashes. That's also kind of downtown where you would see maybe more pedestrian activity. And just in general, most of these crashes occur on what are generally the more, you know, main corridors of the, of the community. So that, and that wasn't altogether surprising, but it, it just kind of shows the correlation between where these crashes are happening and kind of where the broader crash tendencies are. So, so that's kind of an overview of the, the, the crash history for Shelton and that, again, that's the last five years. And again, that's the reported crashes. It doesn't include crashes that may not have been reported or certainly not the near miss crashes that people experience. I'll, I can continue going through or if there aren't any questions or comments at this time.
I, I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Think it's great that we're, we're out here looking for, for safety issues. Do we know how many of these accidents were due to, under the influence? At all?
Yeah, no, that, that's, we do know that. Let me, I don't know if I have a slide specific to that, but yes, as part of the WashDOT crash data, database that we're given, if, if the police officer reporting to the scene suspected or had evidence of alcohol or drugs, it's noted on the crash report. And it is, you know, as I, I'm gonna get to next in terms of discussing risk factors, that was one of the factors we were anticipating potentially seeing. And as a, I guess as a small jump ahead, it wasn't present very often. And in these sixteen crashes, I think we may have had two that had an alcohol or drug association to it. Those are obviously not things we can design around so much. Maybe there's different ways to deal with that with enforcement, but yeah, that is a data point that we have. So, the, uh, once we kind of went through and looked at the crash, the crash history of the city overall and kind of narrowed in on the serious and fatal crashes, the next step of the process is really breaking down each of the serious and fatal crashes and, and identifying the contributing circumstances or the, you know, the roadway conditions that were present at each of those crashes. And those were, we would, you know, those are kind of referred to as risk factors, elements that seem to potentially have been contributing to a serious or fatal crash. So the, the, the process of a local road safety plan is to kind of go through and individually identify those risk factors for each crash. And then when you've done that, you kind of, you then, you create a matrix where you identify how many instances did each risk factor occur for? And the, the methodology kind of outlines that if, if you have any risk factor that shows up in twenty-five percent or more of your serious fatal crashes becomes like a priority risk factor for that community. So we start to look for trends across the different, you know, serious fatal crashes. And then once we've gone, once we did that process, we came up with these as our high priority risk factors and kind of going back to what I was discussing a little bit ago, hitting a pedestrian or inattentive pedestrian, pedestrian crashes located along roadways, what I would say the, not, it wasn't surprising that pedestrian bicycle elements were prevalent in this list because so many of the fatal serious crashes involves bikes or pets. But what was a little surprising was that we really weren't finding any other risk factors that were consistent across the crashes. And in the city, almost all the roads are low speed, so there wasn't really a high-speed element to consider. Oh, I mean, a lot of these were on straight level roads, which is true for most of the city. Some other, some were at intersections, some weren't, but again, there was no detailed distinction between these crashes, except that many of them involved bikes and pets. So as we were kind of, we went through a couple of times because we were just really trying to make sure we weren't missing something more, more broad. And there really didn't seem to be any themes to these sixteen serious fatal crashes, except that many of them involve pedestrians and bicyclists. And so the next step in this process is typically to take your risk factors and then kind of apply them to your top corridors. So you say, okay, if these are the five risk factors that this city has, let's see which of our corridors that have a lot of crashes, which of these corridors have those risk factors? And then those can start to be priority locations for potential systemic improvements. Well, the fact that in, in this data set, really the only common trend was bike-ped you know, involvement, we felt like really that means, let's go back to that map of all the bike and ped crashes. Understanding that the serious fatal ones were, were already bad, but any incident involving a bike or a ped could pretty quickly turn into a serious or fatal crash. And then kind of match that with our list of corridors that we showed above. And so kind of doing that, you can see the graphic is the, the one I showed previously, but also outlining kind of what feels like the priority corridors based on the location of the bike-ped crashes and also kind of referencing that corridor list from before. The, uh, the six corridors that we identify here are all in the top ten for total crashes in the city. But they also have the predominant number of bicycle pedestrian-related incidents, including the vast majority of the serious and fatal pedestrian incidents. And so this is, you know, this is kind of where we would, we were shifting from what we've done to kind of what we're working through right now. So this slide called preliminary, we're kind of, we're honing in on this at, at still, and this is why we, this is a good time to check in with you because if there's additional input or, or knowledge or insight on other areas of the city, in addition to these, we, we want to make sure to capture that before we go too much farther, but this is kind of where we're zooming in on the, what we would consider the high priority corridors in the city, all of which would have a focus on finding ways to improve bicycle or pedestrian safety. And then we have, we, we have received some additional input beyond just the data we got from WashDOT. There have been some local citizens that have in the last year or so, or even more recently, kind of reached out to the city. And Ken and Jay have both been really good about sharing any and all of those testimonies with us as they get them. So there's actually been, you know, four local stakeholder inputs and they're listed here. Arcadia Avenue and K Street were both related to speeding and or school friction, which both have a strong pedestrian element. I know the, for the Arcadia Avenue, the, the woman who was sending in her concerns was specifically talking about pedestrian concerns. The school is one block north of them, so both of those really kind of play into the broader themes of what we're seeing, which is that pedestrian safety is kind of a top priority here. And then Pine Street and Railroad Avenue were identified as roads where sight distance can be an issue. And then in the Capitol Hill area, just the gravel roads, there are steep and dusty, which can also have an element of sight distance problems. And so those are all things that we're kind of incorporating into, what do we want to call the priorities for this, for this plan and our potentially there's a high priority list and then maybe a secondary list, which identifies additional needs, but maybe not at the same priority level. That's kind of the process that we're in right now, but we certainly are open to and trying to get as much information as we can beyond what we have from WashDOT as far as other, other areas that we should be looking at or considering as we, as we kind of move forward with this plan. And so I guess this is, this would be a good time, I think, to just, to just ask that question of you as a group and if there's any testimonies or stories or known areas of concern that you, any of you have or, or hear about, it'd be great to hear those now. And, and if you think of them later or if you hear about them, we're not finishing this tomorrow, but this is kind of one of the main things we were hoping to get from this presentation.
Uh, I, my main area of concern, and I've been talking about it for years, is outside of our, our junior high school where we have four lanes of traffic and a crosswalk with a flashing light and one car will stop when it, when a kid starts crossing the street and the next car won't. And I'm surprised that nobody's been hit there. I actually have a video from like a year and a half ago. I was there five minutes and watched a car almost hit a kid. And where the kid actually made contact with the car. So that's just right across the street from our middle school. And then, and of course, we have a new, uh, grade school or Mountain View School that does not have a crosswalk right in front of the school. It's a block away, one direction, a block the other direction. So I think the school should put in a crosswalk there or ADA ramp so the city could put a crosswalk in there.
Yeah, and the, your, the Mountain View example was one of the specific examples that was raised. That's this East Street afternoon school traffic friction. Definitely, there's people living right there that are kind of just in terror of what's gonna happen when, if changes aren't made. From what they see, they, they describe it as quite chaotic and the lack of a crosswalk was specifically mentioned. And then the, yeah, but I hadn't heard anything about the junior high crosswalk. And as we'll get to later in terms of countermeasures, uh, you know, signalizing crosswalks is, is definitely can be one of the ways to make them safer, but enforcement is key on that too. So the fact that it's already got some amount of, of flashing lights suggested it's not, that's not enough. And there are ways to enhance or improve that even more. So that's, that's definitely a good one to know.
I'll second the comments on crosswalks. I'm not a big fan of crosswalks across multiple lanes like we have on some of our busier roads like Wallace Nealan there. It's like a four-lane intercept, or a four-lane section of road there without any, I'm, I'm curious if pedestrian refuge islands are a concept as well that might work in the city of Shelton and some of those higher areas. So at least somebody makes it halfway across the road. Uh, they're not still standing out in the middle of traffic on a four-lane roadway. And then I like the concept, and it'd be very supportive of especially on the, the, especially using the data points that you have of looking at the bump out scenario. So I, I do know, especially downtown on railroad, it is challenging. You have to kind of step out behind parked vehicles to be seen so you can show intent to cross the road so you can get right, get access across without getting hit by a vehicle. So concepts like that, I'm absolutely for planning those investments with the data presented. The only thing I didn't hear, and you may have mentioned it, I apologize. How much is this season, seasonal? Or related to weather? I believe you get environmental data with your crash statistics. I'm just curious if there's a a time of the year that's more prevalent than the others. I think I kind of know the answer to the question, but I'm curious what your thoughts are.
Yeah, um, first I'll say that you've, you've identified some of the countermeasures that I'm gonna show in a little bit. So that's great. That data, both the time of year and the weather conditions are in the data set. We did look at the weather conditions as a potential factor and didn't see a lot of commonality among the serious fatals. We did not look at time of year. We looked at daylight, evening into lighting, which is time of day, and obviously times of year have more dark versus less dark. And so we looked at lighting and weather. And I would say that time of years kind of informs both of those, but we didn't specifically look at that. So that's something that we can go back and look at because now that you've said it out loud, I'm instantly curious if there are some themes there on time of year. I'm not sure where that would lead, but it's, if there's any themes at all, we would want to know them.
Yeah, I would definitely think that roadway lighting improvements as well as, you know, if it's a snow and ice level of service thing. If we know that there's going to be people crossing the roadway in a snowstorm and, you know, especially if it's a bike-ped incident, it'd probably be something we would focus a level of service on. So even if it's an operate, just an operational thing and not so much a capital. And, you know, especially if it's a bike, ped incident, it'd probably be something we would focus, uh, level of service on, so even if it's an operate, just an operational thing and not so much a capital improvement or. Replacement of an asset, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, but thank you. That's great, and we'll, yeah, it won't be hard to sift the data for that and see what that shows us, um. Were there any other, oh, I think.
Yeah, Brian, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, so the other thing that I wanted to. Talk about, which Joe touched on is the downtown core, and so one of the issues that, um, I hear frequently from pedestrians in that area. Uh, is that when the city took out the stoplight at Fourth and Railroad. That used to be kind of the safe cross, um, for folks mid-block, uh, right against mid-railroad, and so we see a lot of pedestrian traffic going to the post office, particularly. Around the lunch hour or near the end of the day, and so as folks are crossing at third, we've had requests for. Um, you know, flags on sticks that people can walk themselves across the road or flashers or some other mechanism to, again, as Joe pointed to. Gain attention from the passing, um, traffic. But the other piece of that being that while we have bulb outs on some of the downtown, um, intersections. Because the parking spaces aren't offset quite far enough. When traffic is at that corner, they tend to creep up to, to see what's going on on railroad from a side street, and so the pedestrians have been losing that visibility. And so that may be something we need to take a look at as well as how the parking stalls planning. Uh, plays into pedestrian traffic patterns in downtown core.
Yeah, I, the. So one of the, oh, sorry. One of the things that we looked at in, in our pursuit of finding themes was trying to assess. Pedestrian generators or attractors or like main hubs of pedestrian activity and. Just, you know, looking at these corridors, it was kind of hard to decide, well, from this block to this block, there aren't any, there. Along these major corridors, there seemed to be a fairly consistent presence of something that might result in a, a ped activity, but it's, it's really good to know that. The post office is specifically one that sounds like it generates a lot of pedestrian activity crossing railroad. So, and, and, and then the fact that they used to have a, a safe crossing and then now maybe they don't have that controlled crossing. Um, that's, that's. And so, you know, going back to the beginning, when I was talking about systemic improvements and then potentially spot improvements. The plan is going to look at doing both, and so systemic improvements, we can identify some basic themes that. Could work on these corridors, but it's, it's specific spot areas like that, even though there hasn't been a serious fatal crash. At Railroad Third or Railroad Fourth. That could, that could easily be a spot improvement that we identify that there's a need for a protected crossing here, and that. That would be a spot improvement recommendation that would go kind of outside of. The, the systemic improvements that we would recommend, and that might be a, that could be tailored then specifically to that need, so. Definitely going to make a note of that as a specific spot that could be a good candidate for an improvement. So, yeah, that's great, uh, I, I don't want to, I want to allow everyone to share, so if there's anything else anybody wanted to say. Um, please feel free.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Sorry. I was on mute, sorry, Ryan. I don't know if we've seen this or heard about this or whatnot, but. There was a lengthy email here, oh, a few weeks ago. And I'm not sure all the council members got it, but I got it and, um. Is referring to Mountain View School. And the line of cars that are there every morning dropping off kids. And it might be something to look at as far as making like a. A turn lane there or something. I think there's might be enough room, but you might look at that.
I, uh, Ken was, I think, very prompt in sharing that with me when he, when it was sent to the city or whenever he got it, and, and. That was the, uh. The E Street bullet on this slide was in response to that email. Um, and, yeah, I, reading that email carefully, it, it's clear that at least from the perspective of who wrote it, it's really bad when school is, you know, letting out. And, you know, just kind of from my own personal experience. I've worked on several elementary schools where. Over the past, and this is, I know a recent redesign, but over the past fifteen years, there's been this big trend away from bus use and to parent. Drop off pickup, and that has overwhelmed a lot of these schools' ability to, you know, manage that pickup and drop off activity. They just don't have the room on site. Because these sites were kind of designed primarily when that wasn't nearly as common. And, and there's, there's a lot of ways that you can, you can start to tackle that issue depending on the circumstances, whether that's an onsite solution with. More circulating pavement where you can store more of the cars there, or if there's also an off, a, a street improvement like a turn lane. Because I know one of the things that I think Joe mentioned it too. Or Eric was the idea that when one car is there kind of stopped, it, it kind of grid locks the road really quickly. There's no refuge for anybody to sit aside and wait. So it doesn't take a lot of congestion to really create a dangerous environment, especially when you also have kids walking home. So, yeah, I think that, that seems to clearly be a priority location and. I think we, and we're going to continue to work with the city on figuring out. What improvement or improvements might make sense to specifically recommend, or it might be that given the complexity of. What might be causing the problem, that it needs to be studied a little bit more specifically. Um, and then to determine some improvements that way.
Were there a lot of crashes that were just, uh, one car collisions? Not car versus car? Or something else?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Only running into one of our, our stop signs or something like that?
In terms of the, I, I mean, so in terms of the overall crash data, there, there were many of those. In terms of the, the sixteen that we're kind of, you know, we're focusing more on, which are the serious and the fatal. There were a couple that were kind of isolated, one-vehicle incidents. A, a lot of them were one-vehicle and then a pedestrian, so, you know, but in terms of excluding those. There were a couple, and I think that kind of speaks to why we didn't see. Other themes, because a lot of those crashes that did involve a ped or a bike were these kind of one-off incidents where they, maybe they straight off the road and hit a. Pole, or they were under the influence of alcohol. I mean, they, there wasn't a consistent. Factor in those crashes because they just all seem to be. One-off incidents, um, other than obviously the main theme of pedestrian bicycle involvement. Which I guess is good in a way. It means that maybe not all those areas are unsafe, but obviously. We look for those themes to help guide the, the spending and. Whether or not there are other themes that just weren't present in the last five years, clearly pedestrian and bicycle safety is kind of the, the main concern at the moment, but. Yeah, yeah, there weren't other themes present.
The overall, I'm looking through the data that you have on your presentation and, you know, the, the top five or, you know, whatever their first and three, Olympic Highway North. The predominantly, these are rear-ending, rear-ender collisions. You know, which in my opinion, um, and I'm not a traffic engineer by any means, but. Um, you know, we did go through and do a compact roundabout in Shelton and. Removing those conflict points in an intersection, prevent those types of accidents, those rear-ender collisions. Um, you know, and so again, I think. You know, uh, the other piece of this and not, not downplaying the data at all, because, you know, this is definitely important. Um, roadway safety is incredibly important, but. You know, all of these routes, I guess the positive part is, you know, these are all of our, pretty much all of it looks like, um, principal arterials in the city. These are our highly traveled. Routes. We have the highest amounts of traffic, very few in residential neighborhoods, which is great to see. Um, but, you know, so those are kind of the challenges that'll come with things, but it's good to see. Some options and hear what, how feasible some of these options could be. Um, you know, in these intersections as time goes on, so we can make these improvements.
Yeah, and I, yeah, you definitely, you honed in on that well, and I would say that. You know, I've looked at lots of crash data sets and rear ends are basically always the number one crash, you know, the, and they're, those are. Rarely resulting in significant injury. Um, not to say that they can't, but typically those are, are low on the injury spectrum. And, and they, yeah, you expect to see those in areas where there's more traffic and more congestion and roundabouts are certainly good at. Removing the high-risk crash types. I mean, I, I know there's a lot of studies on how safe, how much safer roundabouts are than, than other. Control types, especially at reducing the hive, the high injury. Crashes, because it does remove conflict points and it reduces speeds and both of those kind of help. And, and I, you know, the, the list, and I, I know you guys have all, already all seen the presentation, so you've seen kind of the slides where we talk about. Uh, counter, potential countermeasures. They're all geared primarily towards improving the pedestrian bicycle environment. Uh, but some of those will also. Mitigate some of these other, you know, trends on these corridors, a, a mini roundabout that may reduce travel speeds, which makes it safer for pets, will also. Reduce travel speeds, which will make it less likely for cars to crash. I mean, there's, there's, it's not just one benefit to some of these improvements. Um, and yeah, it is nice to see that these crashes are largely on. The main thoroughfares and not in the local residential areas, and the few that were really seemed to have themes that were. You know, unique to that particular instance, not even to that spot, but just the circumstance was kind of unique, and there wasn't really a lot of trend or. Or data to suggest that it was vulnerable again. Um, having said that. We're not ignoring the spots that may not, so if I scroll back down to. This graphic, there's a couple orange-red circles that aren't showing up on these corridors. We're certainly not ignoring those. The, these would be, these purple lines would represent maybe our priority corridors. But we would certainly be looking at, are there spot improvements? That make sense as countermeasures at these specific locations outside the corridors? And so we'll, we'll make that assessment, that we'll work with the city and decide. You know, for this crash, was there a deficiency at the intersection that we can resolve with a countermeasure, and if so, it'll be on the list. In addition to these corridor-wide, you know, priority areas. So, with having said all of that. Um, again, this, we're still in the process of kind of honing in on what exactly we want to recommend, but. You know, these are, these next few slides kind of discuss. Countermeasures that can address some of this specific issues that we're either seeing or hearing about and. And so this, you know, these mini roundabouts, which aren't necessarily. The same as a legitimate roundabout controlled intersection, but can be located especially in neighborhood corridors as a way of calming speeds. Um, we, uh. The city has, uh, some speed signs that they've recently been able to locate in different corridors in the city. And they, they can run those in ghost mode so that they're recording speed data without actually flashing your speed and telling you you're going too fast, and then they can turn it on. And then it will flash, oh, you're speeding, slow down, and then we've been able to get a little bit of that data. To just kind of digest, are there some, some clear speeding issues on some of these main corridors? We, you know, the data was limited to a short duration, but what we were seeing generally was. Turning the sign on didn't matter. People were driving the same before or after, and also that generally, the spots that we checked weren't. There was obviously speeding, but there wasn't consistent speeding beyond what you would expect almost anywhere. However. The, uh. Going back up to here, the East Arcadia Avenue was one of the spots that. The, a local resident has expressed concern about multiple times, so we, the city very recently was able to put these signs up there. And again, in, in a broader sense, we didn't see any consistent themes of speeding, but I believe the high speed recorded was sixty-seven. So that's an obscenely fast speed for any of the roads in the city, but for a neighborhood like that. Um, it's hard to say how much you want to chase down that one. Driver that was feeling reckless, but an improvement like this would make that much more difficult to do. So this is one of the potential countermeasures we were, we're kind of expecting to include. Uh, is, as far as candidates in the systemic corridor improvement. Um, almost like a menu, if we're on our corridor, which, what things could we consider depending on the spot? Um, another one, and this has come up a couple of times, you know, from, from you guys. These, uh, curb extensions in areas where there's on-street parking to help minimize. The crossing distance and, and also improve visibility, so these are, these are really. Really helpful in areas where there's on-street parking and, and multiple corridors that we've identified. And, you know, in downtown and also on Olympic Highway North, there, there is on-street parking space. So e, even if there's not cars parked in it. You know, as soon as the pedestrian steps off the curb, they're now at risk. And so the, the long, the, the longer that distance, the more exposure, the more risk there is. And then, and Joe mentioned something, this effect too, that he doesn't like the crossings of the, of the four road, four, four-lane roads. That, that goes straight to this point, that the longer you're exposed, the, the more likely it is that something can happen, and so this is one of the ways that you can reduce that exposure. While also, you know, maximizing the potential to be seen. Uh, Megan, I see a hand on your screen. Did you want to, have you, go ahead.
Just wondering your experience working with like other cities and downtown corridors and small towns like ours, um. Have you seen? Additional designs like this with curb extensions to reduce the crossing distance as well as like. Similar designs that extend like businesses out into parking areas to give them like. Outdoor seating and whatnot. Have you seen designs like that that have helped reduce like, uh? The amount of traffic, or you know, the speed of traffic and whatnot? I like, I, I recently was in Walla Walla, so that's why I asked about that. You have all not been to Walla Walla. Of late, um, they have several different opportunities for businesses to have a. Like a, even a removable type of situation, like what you're seeing here with a curb extension, so. Ryan, you got any insight on that?
Um, so I would say specific to these curb extensions, yeah, these are a pretty common. Countermeasure that you'll see in downtown environments. Um, and that's not necessarily an overly new trend. It, it's, it's neat to hear your experience about the business element, because I, I haven't personally been involved in a project that implemented that, but I have. Um, sat in on multiple webinar discussions about that, that more emerging trend, and I know. COVID and the need for outdoor dining really increased like the value of having these extensions of businesses to the outside environment, outside their street. Their window and a kind of recapturing space that for, you know, for a long time. The, the roadway network has really been. Specific to serving vehicles, and I think there's more and more momentum to broadening the definition of what these roadway networks need to serve and. And then a lot of times, that's the sort of treatment that can kind of recapture pavement for the businesses and the pedestrians. And, and maybe make the vehicles less of a priority. I think that. You know, if you want to, considering those types of, uh, improvements is great, I think that, that they need to be in the right context. And, you know, you don't want to necess, there's, there's a trade-off to a degree in terms of vehicle throughput or parking that you have to kind of deal with if you want to have some of those treatments. And it's completely defensible to have. Like a policy-driven decision where we want to prioritize all modes of travel, and we acknowledge that vehicles may be slightly. Negatively impacted, but at the greater benefit of these other modes. Um, but we, you know, we making sure we understand that the pros and the cons of the trade-offs. Depending on the, like, if it was on railroad or first, and first, you know. South of railroad is essentially the state route, and so that's a different animal, and then north of there, I mean, there's. Contexts to be considered, but yeah, I think that's something that we could. I don't have a slide for that, but that's a newer trend that could maybe be a great fit for certain parts of this town, of Shelton as well, so. I'm going to make a note of that. And I, and, you know, they, in the webinars I was tuning in on, they were all. Presented by people that were seeing this done in their local communities, and Walla Walla was not presented, but it's really neat to, to hear about a local community here that's also doing those things. I know it's not right next door, but Walla Walla is not too far away.
They do wine tasting. We could do wine tasting and shellfish tea.
And I guess I don't know if it's the right time to kind of start talking about this, uh, but I, I definitely like to talk more about prioritizing. A project like this each year. I know, I know we, we have some focus areas on. Uh, roadway maintenance and improvements each, each year in our budget, but I'd like to, I'd like to consider, um. Prioritizing at least, I mean, I'm outside of the. Existing capital improvements, if we're doing other roadway improvements, I'm sure. We're going to be resolving, you know, we would resolve any, uh, safety issues at the time when we're doing that construction. But outside of that, if there's, if there's definitely areas that we can prioritize. You know, a project or two a year amongst our, some of our residential paving and other types of stuff, I'd, I'd be interested in having conversations on. On, uh, you know, which of these, which of these projects would be feasible, um, I know we have kind of a limited amount of funding we can kind of throw at this, but. Um, to even add, potentially adding similar projects to our legislative priorities, I know. Safe routes to schools was another opportunity through the T I B. Um, you know, for some of this type of stuff, but, um. I think the data that you presented was, was very helpful in, in wanting to try to. Tackle this one, so. Just throwing it out to the council members.
I, I like that idea, Joe.
And, and so, yeah, that's great, and the last slide on this show, uh, this presentation talks about next steps and. And that's, that's one of the key deliverables of this plan is kind of coming up with not only the areas that, that need to be focused on. But a prioritization of those areas and, and or spot improvements. And so as, also as part of this process, once we kind of finalize the countermeasures that we kind of want to run with. We're going to do some planning level cost estimates of what those would cost. And then that can also inform, are there some, some inexpensive fixes that could be done in the shorter term? And thus maybe prioritize some of those while we work on getting funding for some of the more expensive ones. Um, so that's, that's work to come and, and the, the idea of the city trying to champion one or two of these every year sounds terrific. Um, I know in, not unique to Shelton, but money is always difficult to, to find. And one of the, you know, the pluses of this plan is it really positions you well to, to seek out funding sources. I mean, it's really hard to be competitive without a, a, a plan like this that, that identifies the need ahead of time. But once you have it, it really opens some doors. And I know Ken's well aware of those opportunities and it's a big part of why this, this plan is such a good idea to come, to uh complete. Um. So you know, planner strip, this is kind of a, a little bit of a more generic improvement. Not only is exposure on the road um, but increasing the risk, but having distance between the sidewalk and the road. Is another way to kind of increase safety and, and a lot of these roads have on-street parking. So in a way, there's already this buffer built in between the traveling vehicles and the pedestrians. But um planner strips, and in addition to, this goes a little beyond maybe the pure safety of it. But I know just in terms of assessing the performance of a sidewalk or the comfort level of a sidewalk, which tend to go hand in hand with how they perform. That having that extra buffer can go a long way towards making it feel more comfortable and usable. Um, one of the problems that we've had in other jurisdictions where we've kind of done an assessment of pedestrian safety is. When you're using existing crash data and if the community understands, well, I would never walk there because it's, it's wildly dangerous. And then there's no data because they already know it's dangerous and foolish, so you don't walk there, so you don't get crashes. And so there's no data to support a change. The idea behind the systemic improvements is to try to figure out those locations that maybe people don't walk because they're dangerous. But if we can use other locations as the mechanism to fund an improvement there, then that can help. Um, Kathleen, go ahead.
Yes, um, I'm really interested in previous paving for sidewalks. What, what is the lifespan of those versus cement sidewalks that we have now? And the durability of them? You can you, would that be a, do you off the top of your head? Um.
At the top of my head, I have no idea.
Okay, alright.
That, that's a great question. That, um, so I am not an engineer. And that rings a lot of engineer bells in my head. Uh, I know there are people that I could quickly talk to that would give me a pretty quick answer to that. Um, and, and Ken may have thoughts, I'm not to put him on the spot, but thoughts on the pros and cons of, of doing sidewalks with previous surfaces instead of impervious. Um. And that, that, I mean, there's lots of pros and cons or pros to, to that sort of thing. I, I guess, are you raising that comment specifically thinking about safety or just thinking more broadly about the pedestrian network?
Um, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at safety uh for one thing. I, I live downtown, so I walk around town a lot. And the cement sidewalks, you know, are cracking and, and you know, they're dangerous. So I'm just visual, I think it's, previous pavers are beautiful, I think. And, but safety-wise, cost-wise, I'm just curious about that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, that's great. That's, I mean, that's a great additional input and that's something that we can kind of track down and figure out. Is, is, you know, does that make sense as, as we're rehabbing some of these sidewalks anyway? Does it make sense to convert to a different material that might make it more inviting? Cause I think this goes beyond just making it safer. I think, you know, we want to try to promote these modes as much as possible and safety. And just generally feeling comfortable are both part of that, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Deidre.
Oh, yeah, Deidre.
Ryan, just as a side note, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the downtown visioning plan that the city um worked with community stakeholders on. But there's some um good insights there about pedestrian safety, obviously specific to the downtown core. Um, but we've been trying to capture some of those elements within other capital projects and improvements. So it might be worthwhile kind of detailing those pieces as, as we move forward.
Yeah, well, that's great. I, you know, when, when we started this, we had a kind of a kickoff with Ken and Jay. And it was a uh, a bombardment of resources. They were so excited to talk about what they knew and what they wanted this process to be. And the uh plethora of other documents and resources. So I, I haven't gone through that well enough yet. And, and I think now that we're at the stage we're at now, where we're trying, we're kind of winnowing in on, we have kind of our broad priority areas. And we're considering countermeasures and we're really going to dig in now to spot recommendations. I think that's the right time to really mesh and marry that to existing plans. And, and it, whatever overlap we can manage to get is, is great. And we don't need to, you know, reinvent priorities if there's already some great documented ones there. So that's a good reminder. So uh, you know, it got mentioned earlier that the crossing for the junior high has got flashing lights. And then so a way to kind of amplify the, the visibility and safety is to have a truly civilized pedestrian crossing. And R F B specific, you know, treatments have, are kind of shown to be much of best performing in terms of. Vehicles. Right, uh, you know, adhering to them or like, like not enforcement, but like, you know, success rate, I guess you would say. Of the vehicles reacting that R F Bs specifically seem to have really good performance metrics for that. So I think, you know, in, in specific spots and I'm in, you know, the junior high crossing walk for sure. And potentially other locations in the city where there are these uncontrolled crossings in the middle of a potentially high-volume corridor. I think this is a specific improvement we almost certainly expect to have in the plan as a systemic improvement. And then likely multiple specific spots where we would maybe advocate for this treatment. And then another one that kind of hits on a, a, a earlier comment, this idea of refuges in the middle of a roadway. So yeah, the, the four lane, even three lane, three lanes actually work really well for this sort of treatment. Because you can install it in the existing two-way left turn lane space, but the more travel lanes there are, the, the more exposure. So this is just again, another tool in the, in the, in the toolbox for kind of reducing that amount of exposure. And um, and, and I think this is one we would almost certainly expect to have in the plan as a systemic improvement. And then we'll be working with the city to figure out if there's specific spots we want to preemptively recommend this treatment for. Uh, so I think that's, that's not the entire list of what we would potentially have in the plan. But those are some of the initial countermeasures that we've kind of honed in on, knowing that pedestrian and bicycle safety is the priority. Um, as we kind of dig a little bit more into specific spots within the corridors, it may be candidates for a, a, a recommended improvement. There, there could very well be other countermeasures that make sense. Those are countermeasures that we just, I kind of just walked through, all feel like systemic improvements. That can be kind of broadly considered on the corridors that we've identified as appropriate. Um, kind of like, like I said before, a menu of considerations. And I would expect likely most or all of those to be in the plan with a, a, a planning level cost estimate attached to them. The nice thing about those improvements is that by and large, their price tag is consistent regardless of where. Um, the planner strip might be the one exception to that, but a lot of those other ones are really not going to cost more in one part of town or the other. Versus some improvement types will depend on the specific, especially when there's right-of-way involved. If there's a right-of-way take needed, that dramatically changes the, the cost and it would be specific to a spot. But most of those improvements, we can kind of come up with a broad price tag for, and that'll be applicable wherever, wherever those improvements make sense. Um, so we've kind of, you know, I, I kind of inserted this slide in the narrative earlier where I was kind of asking for feedback. I, I've got a lot of notes here for some specific concerns or, or observed areas of, of interest. And that, and that's exactly what we were hoping to get, uh, you know, a month or, a month or so ago. The plan initially was for me to come to the city of Shelton, meet with Ken and Jay. And then Jay was kind of putting feelers out to get maybe some local people to come. And he was having a hard time getting people interested in, in crash data and, you know, I guess discussing this. So he kind of decided, hey, let's just go talk to council. They're all, you know, residents and they hear things maybe more than the average citizen anyway. So it's, it's, it's great to have the chance to talk to all of you and really hear some of the concerns that you either have or have picked up on. Um, through your, just your relationships with the city. So then, you know, kind of, this is the last slide, just talking about next steps. We've kind of talked about a lot of this already, but you know, finalizing what we would consider to be the priority locations. Depending on um some of these other locations that have been discussed, we, we might have a hierarchy of like high priority and other priorities. Because we're trying, you know, as much as possible, we're trying to, to. Build this report on the data. And I think that the more data-driven it is, the more competitive it becomes for funding. But we don't want to ignore any, any and all areas that have, that are concerns, you know, within the city. And there's certainly a place for them in this plan. Um, and then also just kind of honing in on the exact countermeasures that we think we want to recommend. And then specifically going through and prioritizing locations or countermeasures that could be candidates for, you know, short-term. And, you know, implementation based on cost or need or both. Um, and that will, you know, that third bullet will be integral in, in that discussion with the city too. So that's kind of the next step and it's kind of the last big effort before this plan is pulled together. Um, so we're, we're going to be working with the city on, on kind of finalizing locations and countermeasures. And then working through a prioritization of those countermeasures. And we would expect to finish the report in that, in that process in the next couple of months. And then the idea being that we'll then try to get positioned for funding specifically from WashDot, for, you know, whatever funding sources are available. They're always going to be looking for where's, where's the plan that proves that need or that shows that need. So we'll have that plan. Um, so that, that's kind of where we're headed. And I, I guess that's kind of all I had. So if there were any other comments or questions, uh, it's been great to share this. And I'm, I'm, I love that everyone kind of had a chance to, to kind of share their own thoughts and concerns. And, and we're going to do what, everything we can to get all of those in here because this is plan is for Shelton. And whatever we can do to address all these issues is that's the whole point of this.
Sounds like to me that we need to prioritize uh pedestrian areas or, or downtown and areas where their crosswalks are insufficient. And um, to me, it sounds like the pedestrians are the biggest problem right now.
So that's right. Oh, yeah, and that, that's, that was the, the huge takeaway was that is the problem really. In terms of themes and trends, that was it. That our, the pedestrians and the bicyclists and, and you know, they're exposed and they're, they're the ones that are getting these fatal serious crashes. And even though the downtown core doesn't have the predominance of the fatal serious, they definitely have the predominance of overall collisions. And, and there are, and not to say they don't have fatal serious, so I, I totally agree. Pedestrian are the priority and downtown is where the most of those are. So finding solutions for areas in the downtown area is definitely going to be one of, I think, the higher priorities of this plan.
Alright. Any more questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Absolutely. It was great to meet all of you and, and to share where we're at.
Hey Ryan, I have one question for you.
Sure.
Oh.
This has nothing to do with the city corridor traffic. You went to uh, to Nino High School, right?
I did.
What year did you graduate?
Um, two thousand and three.
Okay, just wondering.
Ryan also attended St. Martin's while I was there and was very active with this golf club. So I think you probably have seen some special features here in Shelton that are appealing along the way.
Yep, I, when I saw your face show up, I was like, oh man, the, it, it, I don't want to say the way back because it wasn't that long ago. But it kind of was that we were in college. Yep.
Different last name, I know.
Yes, and that was the pause, but I was convinced that it didn't matter. Yep, I knew that face.
Alright, council. Does council have any more items for discussion tonight? Seeing, seeing none. This study session is adjourned at seven oh four.